Yeah, I'll call order the regular November board meeting of the school district North Fond du Lac. We'll call.
Here's the basketball here, Hax, Stepbacher here, Cole.
Here.
Report on public notices.
Yes, public notices were mailed to the reporter, to KFIZ 107.1 and also Sunday 97.7. And also full set US Bank District Office and at the North Fond du Lac Village Municipal Building on Wednesday, November 21st of 2018.
Alright, next item is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll need the approval minutes. Should we have several of them? The end of meetings stand approval as printed, so we don't act on that, but the facilities committee meeting of October 22nd, the board meeting of October 22nd, and it looks like it goes nuts.
And the 15th, which is the one, I know we actually with the 15th we didn't have, and the last one that was a special meeting would follow us.
Do they each need their own? Did James there questions on the minutes? And those will stand approved as printed? Alright, next item is Turner's.
Alright, cash balance on hand as of October 23rd was $250,864.86. We had a total receipts of $1,828,126.63 with expenditures, $1,809,145.68. Leaving us a cash balance on hand as of November 26th of $18,960.95. Bills are recommended for payment as shown on the attached list dated November 26th in the amount
I'll take motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, second. Any discussion, questions on the minutes? Alright, Gary, you want to draw a call?
Alan.
Yes.
Hax.
Yes.
Stephbacher.
Yes, Obaski, yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Hey, Mr. Hax, before we go on, just a point of reference, we have, and I know this makes Maria a little bit nervous, where we have $18,980 in the bank, and we have something called payroll coming up this weekend, and we don't get our next eight until the 5th of December. So we're kind of at that crunch time now, but we do have that ability now because of our increased costs and we have that short-term borrow, so it's looking like we'll probably have to short-term borrow for all five days. Just that way.
We've been through the equity or the bank.
Through the bank.
Alright, next item is clerk's report.
I have a thank you note from Mr. Keel, and also from the Fond du Lac Running Club. And then we had donations for six small engines from Tim Keenan at BTC, $200 Fond du Lac Running Club, and then Airmark Food Service Brian Mann with the chef's coats.
Just add to the thank you from Gary Keel as his father passed away and asked for practice, the district practice on the $20 check that sent to the memory of a parent that has been lost.
Alright, next item is student council report. Dominic Ackerman, she's tied up tonight, he's not here.
Yep, so you're stuck with me, sorry. Student council is getting ready for holiday events. They donated about $200 for fleece to make blankets for the FLC Angel Tree event. So far nine blankets have been made in Mrs. Cole's Orl time, and they hope to finish at least eight more in the coming weeks. We also just started our annual penny wars, so it's a great event this week to see. Started today and runs through Friday, and then they will be shopping with the proceeds on December 6th to help six children through the FLC program and several others at the high school. Key Club held its annual card decorating night. They created beautiful cards to help right up the holidays for those at a local nursing home. And then Key Club also held its fall blood drive on November 14th. National Honor Society has been setting up its project for December, which is the Christmas Elves. So more to share about this at the next meeting. They also wish they didn't have on here, but they just emailed all staff who would like to participate in Secret Santa. And so those of us that signed up will have a student council member, so that's kind of really cool. And I just wanted to share going along with student council, we had a giving tree that is set up in our lounge for high school staff, and we tried to get a small basket for as many students as possible. Last year we did either gloves or hats, and sometimes both, and then a food item with them, and then a gift card. Last year we were able to purchase $5, $10 gift cards because we wanted everyone still to pick out just a little something for themselves. So we are working on that as a high school. And that is it for now.
Thank you very much. Next item is citizen input. I look forward to any comments or questions for citizens. Item's not already on the agenda, if you have any. 7:12, Ian. And what was that portion of the meeting? Item J, superintendent's report. First item is recognition of fall all-conference athletes and coaches. Athletic department fall review and winter preview. Mr. Burton?
Thank you, Mr. Hax. So tonight we have some students and parents and attendants that have done excellent things and really epitomize what's great about athletics, is our student athletes and their accomplishments, including the two-time defending boys' cross-country coach that was only followed a two-times girls' cross-country championship. So we've actually won the flyaway conference across country at least one of the two genders for the past four years. So pretty great. But this time fortunate enough to have Matt Bertram, our A.D., and he will go and talk about each one of our athletes and course, review and then preview, and I think he has a special thing he wants to share. I know now what's in that thing. That's a great call too. Want to thank Wanda for what you're gonna do and who you're gonna give it to.
I'll start off with the one sport that's on this up there that a lot of people have been pestering about the last couple of years, and that's football. This past year, again, we made the tough decision to not go with a varsity schedule. We went with a varsity reserve schedule and also a JV2 schedule, so we still had two levels of football, which allowed for our seniors through freshmen, still allowing them to be able to play football this year. Mr. Whitaker wasn't able to be here tonight, he didn't share any words with you. Wanted to share these words with you. This past season saw considerable growth in our football program. We started the season in August with 29 players for grade 9 through 12, and with work of the coaches and players, we were able to increase the numbers from 29 players to 39 players at the end of the year, which is almost unheard of any football program, even if you go to Kimberly, to say that they increased its football players throughout the course of the season. We were able to play at two levels this past season, we're 9 and 10 overall. I see, 9 and 10, 9, 10, and 10, 12 players playing in the varsity reserve contest. It was a difficult season as we were editing games while the season was going along, and we played a total of nine JV, two games, and seven varsity reserve games, with three of those games against varsity teams like Johnson Creek, Pomar Eagle, and La Conia. Both the JV2 and varsity reserve teams progressed as the season went along, and we look forward to competing at the varsity level again next season. We have officially put our paperwork in and have been officially accepted back, and we will be running a varsity schedule again next year. We are full, we actually have a full schedule for both the varsity and JV2 levels for next year, both have nine games ready to go. I'll be working with student government and along with the screen on trying to figure out a date for the homecoming game, which game is going to be for the homecoming. The goal again, we're trying to pull up, what we tried to pull up this year, having both soccer and football be a part of the homecoming proceedings. I've been working with Mr. Forsythe the last couple of years, trying to figure out how to get cross-country and on the next and that somewhere too. So still trying to, you know, trying to make the homecoming not about football, about all our athletic programs, and really making a full school and community event. With that, I move on to soccer. Head coach, Tony Densin, does a great job of not only having to balance working with me, but he also has the balance working with three other athletic directors since we cool off with St. Mary Springs, La Conia, and Oakfield for boys' soccer. So he has to coordinate and direct traffic with four schools. Not a very easy task, and he does an incredible job, and I really did my hat to him, because he's a wonderful guy to work with and his coaching staff. We were very fortunate to have several of our players get some all-conference nominations here. First team all-conference, one, two, North Fond du Lac, very own Alex Gonzalez. We had, I don't think he's here. We have a second team, two, St. Mary Springs, Cammy, and I'm not going to try to butcher that last name, sorry. Honorable mentions to Oscar Sanchez from North Fond du Lac and TJ Hermani from St. Mary Springs. Mr. Densin wanted me to share this with you guys. He's very sorry he was not able to be here tonight. We lost a whole large group of talented seniors last year, and we struggled a little bit to fill their shoes early in the season, but ultimately had some conference results. We tied WLA 1-1, defeated Central Wisconsin Christian 3-2, and we lost on a last-minute goal to St. Lawrence Seminary. We finished a respectable six in the conference, but we also had some good results against non-conference competitions, including a tie, a 2-2 tie against a Division 1 Green Bay East team. We were tied for second highest scoring offense in the conference, and junior forward Alex Gonzalez had the way in scoring with 18 goals. He tallied of the 12 goals in conference, he was also tied for the highest in conference and received a deserved first-team selection, falling one vault shy of an unanimous selection. New to the team this year was sophomore Oscar Sanchez, who was our midfield anchor. He was excellent positioning, helped snuff out opponent's attacks on his quick, intelligent passing with the starting point of our offense, and for his efforts, he was able to receive an honorable mention. Obviously, we had a very young team this past year, so Mr. Densin is extremely excited about coming back next year and what the capabilities are as we move forward here with them. Moving on, we had volleyball. First year, coach, Mr. Ed Schreiber, we were able to bring in. After we moved on here, Mr. Schreiber came in and did a wonderful job in a difficult situation. Kind of had a little bit of an issue coming in here, but we were able to work together, get it situated. Today is actually his birthday, so make note of that. So that's the reason why he's not here tonight, he is off celebrating his birthday, but he did want me to share this with you guys. The volleyball program was in a transition learning year this year, obviously coming over new philosophy with a new head coach. The varsity JV1 and JV2 teams were selected to give the program the best chance to be successful for long-term. He made a conscious effort this year that he was not going to be focused on winning at any cost, it was building for long-term, which has been a theme a lot with all the coaches here in North Fond du Lac that I'm very, very proud of. From Todd Whitaker, from football, Tony Densin, the soccer, Gary, right across the board. It's been really revamping, reshaping a lot of stuff, moving forward that we're successful not just for one year, but for the long-term going forward here. The players did a good job adjusting to the new expectations, new system, to their new roles and positions. Even with all the changes, the team was able to win more matches than the previous year. Actually, now when Jordan Stepbacher were leaders, great teammates and very coachable, and with their outstanding play, we were voted onto the honorable mention of the all-conference team. And you want to make sure we send those congratulations out to Ashley and Jordan.
Oops, they're in Marcus' hand today.
Yep, that's right. With that going. Moving on then for our fall sports review, I am going to, I am very blessed to have Mr. Doug Forsythe here to talk about the cross-country program. And I know Mr. Stedhoff already talked about some of those athletes, but without further ado, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mr. Forsythe to talk about the cross-country program.
Cross-country had a great year. We finished the season with 31 athletes on the cross-country team, which makes about three and a half times more than I had five years ago when I started. And we're to the point now when we have both high school and middle school going to the same event, we have to take two buses, which is a wonderful thing. So a lot of success, and we're still very young. I had two seniors on the boys' team, and I had zero seniors on the girls' team. So of those 31, 29 are coming back next year. And we got a bunch of really good eighth-grade runners coming back. Not only were the boys varsity conference champs, the boys' middle school was also conference champs. So we got some really good runners still feeding the program, so that was really exciting. Our girls' team finished fourth in the conference, so in the middle of the pack. We had one junior, one sophomore, and then eight phenomenal freshmen that are just going to get stronger and stronger, so I'm really excited about the direction the girls' team's headed in again. We had three of our seven runners make the all-conference team. So Avery Conger, one of our Oakfield kids, was second-team all-conference. And then Emma, who's here tonight, one of our North Bondi students, she was honorable mention, earned that coming off an injury. She had been kind of battling through all season and really finished the season strong and a little bit healthier, not 100%, but she battled, so that was great. And then we also had JJ Greminger, who was an Oakfield student, was an honorable mention selection. So girls' team is doing great. Boys' team, I'm gonna work, we had conference champs, second year in a row, so that was really exciting to go back-to-back. And I've already told the boys, get ready for the three B, we are the team to beat. So with the boys' team, there are seven varsity runners, we had seven all-conference members. So we really filled out the all-conference team well, and in fact, our number-one JV runner could have been an all-conference runner also. So that was exciting. So I'm gonna start from the bottom, Cole Volbright, one of our Oakfield freshmen, he was an honorable mention choice. And then Dalton Fritsch, one of our two seniors, was honorable mention. And Cameron Hilt, junior. Dalton and Cameron are both North Bondi students. And then on the second team, we had Andrew Forsythe, one of our North Bondi students. This is the second year in a row he's been second-team all-conference. And then we had a freshman phenom, Nolan Stark, who's here tonight, made first-team all-conference, finishing seventh at the conference meet.
Thanks, my favorite.
So Nolan, as a freshman, finished seventh, made first-team all-conference. If you look at that list, the next freshman you see on that list is our Cole Volbright, who finished 22nd and made honorable mention. Everyone else was juniors and seniors. There aren't even any sophomores on that list, I don't believe. So future's very bright for Nolan. He did a great job as a freshman, kind of figuring out how to race. And then Xavier Lasse, finished third, he'll be the top returning runner in the conference next year. And this is his second year as a first-team all-conference selection. And then Diego, who took an unfortunate spill in the conference meet, he was conference runner of the year last year, finished second this year, in a close race with the young man from Springs. And then Diego also capped his season off with being a state qualifier and getting a chance to run in Wisconsin Rapids at the state meet. And he finished 32nd out of 156 runners at the state meet. And unfortunately, he took a fall there too, otherwise, I think he would have been top 15 if he hadn't taken the fall at state. So great season for Diego and for the team, and like I've been saying, I'm really excited about the future and next year's team and impending three B. Thank you.
I'd actually ask the cross-country, or is this a please stand up? So everybody can see you and really get that recognition. Thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
The one thing about cross-country that's, you know, different than all the rest of the fall sports when it comes to all-conference nominations and awards, for football and soccer, that's all based upon coaches, input, and the coaches actually jockey, and there's a lot of politics involved when it comes to all-conference awards for that. Cross-country, the reason why it's dear to my heart as a math person is that it's all about the numbers, it's all about how you finish in the cross-country, in the conference meet. You don't, it's not the coaches that make that determination for all-conference, the individual players for cross-country earn that honor by where they place. So Diego got that with the number two in the first team because he finished second and etcetera all the way down, so that's the reason why it's so impressive that all seven of the varsity members were able to get that award because they earned it. It wasn't just given to them, they got that, so really a good job for them. Moving on from the, I'm gonna talk a little. Moving on to previewing some of our winter sports coming up here, we are in full swing of winter. Mr. Forsythe gets done with cross-country, now this week he turns right open to wrestling here, he's got the, hopefully our wrestling team looking to come back and move up that one more spot and win the conferences here. With the wrestling program, they have their scrimmage this week, and I think you have a tournament already on Saturday then?
Yep.
So they are gonna be going full swing starting up this week. This winter, we are actually not only hosting the conference wrestling meet, but we are hosting the regional meet, and then we are also hosting the team sectional meet here in North Fond du Lac for wrestling. So we have a lot of wrestling going on here, along with Mr. Dave Cohen's classic wrestling tournament that we host here also in winter. So if you are a wrestling fan, this is the place to be at North Fond du Lac here this winter, I tell you. Girls' basketball, obviously they're in Marcus' hand today, competing, which is why a couple of our girls weren't able to be here to receive their recognition for all-conference. They are off to a great start to start the year, 3-0 to start the year. Really, really scrappy, really fun to watch, high-energy, and just get after the ball. So a lot of fun to come out and watch them. Boys' basketball got started off last week, took one on the chin a little bit, but head coach Royal Smith has incredible numbers coming through here. Our seventh and eighth-day programs are full, doing wonderful, and we have three levels strong at the high school level, going for boys' basketball to the point where Coach Smith is able to say, "Our JV2 is strictly all freshmen. Our JV is strictly all sophomores." To be able to have those kind of numbers and do that is extremely well, so our winter athletics are coming back and looking very strong. In addition to something new this year, powerlifting is an official recognized school athletic program, it's longer a club activity, it is being fully recognized as a sport, and to the point where Mr. Tom Moffey, our head coach for the powerlifting, had to order eight singlets as of this morning because there is about, we said, almost 50 kids involved in the powerlifting program. So great job to him there. The other thing, I have two other things here actually, but the one thing, I'm actually gonna go all the way up to our spring sport here, a preview of our spring sport, because there is something that I have to go to the board here with to ask for your approval. The softball team is looking to, with everything that happened last year with the spring weather, Coach Todd Stepbacher and Royal Smith have been working very hard to organize a trip. They would like to take the softball team, JV and varsity softball team, and leave the state over spring break, and go down and play some games at Kentucky, and also one in Indiana over spring break. So just to give you guys a preview that-
Do you want to share that? Why don't we share that in the group business?
Sure. So, but basically something that's gonna be coming up here, I'll be sharing it, that Terry, what their plans are to go with that also. So a lot of exciting things happening with the athletics as we report. Just wonderful, working with Mr. Dave Cohen as my assistant, is an honor to work with the coaches and the people that we have here, and the athletics in North Fond du Lac are definitely growing and getting better, and I can't wait to see this coming up next. My final order of business actually involves a wonderful woman that I invited here tonight. If Mrs. Dawn Nemeth would stand up, please. Every year, the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association takes it, every school is allowed to nominate an organization or individual for throwing above and beyond for athletics. In my second year as athletic director, I made my decision based on the fact that I don't know how we would run our concessions here in North Fond du Lac without this woman, the amount of time, energy, headaches that she has to deal with. Now only working with me, but also with our booster club to make sure that our fans here get high-quality concession deals, to organize and close and activities, to run them, to make sure they're always stocked. I could just, I could honestly go on for hours about how appreciative I am. Don't look me like that, you're making me all of them. So it was very easy for me this year to go ahead and nominate Miss Dawn Nemeth for this award from the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association in recognition of all the work that she does to help provide, not only the concessions, but the money generated for them to go back in and support the students in this school, without a doubt. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
There you go.
See, that's what I told you, I wanted to hear. You did a little word there, and stuff, and it's a little appreciation, so thank you very much. We appreciate you.
I want to thank Matt and Dave, also Dawn, thank you so much, you're one of the big driving forces in the entire world, and we should booster clubs, so thanks for all that you do, and now you recruit your whole family to do it before you were with me also, so we appreciate the whole, even with family. Also to Matt and Dave, you guys have been doing an excellent job, I'm really excited for this year to have consistency in how you're supporting the coaches, and you're supporting what's all right about athletics and students. So to Matt and Dave, you guys are just very blessed to have you guys serve as our athletic directors, so thank you. Alright, at this time, if you would like, you guys, the athletes are more than welcome to leave and go home unless you'd like to stay for some more information, but this is that, that pause, and that break for you, more than welcome to go. Alright, see you guys later, thanks again.
Thank you, Dawn.
Alright. So moving on now, this is our first of a monthly update and report on the Treford Way from Exceptional Mind Charter School that the board has authorized, we are the authorizer, the school district in North Fond du Lac, and there's a lot of exciting things going on. Up to this point, there's been a lot of kind of like, what's happening, what's all going on, but the reality of it was, is that the grant that was earned by this group for $700,000 was earned in order to do planning. And now that we have that opportunity to do some- By the time come January, probably January, I'll have the charter contract all set. I'm working on that now so that we can officially get that going. And this charter school is gonna bring a lot of positivity to our district and more opportunities. So, turn it over to Dr. Dallo.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to work with us. Very supportive of our unique opportunity. And we're very glad to have, I think, probably some amazing things that happened in the short, matter of time. The folks I have, you know Beth, Artis, we have Karen Berthel, Lori.
The Ballist.
The Ballist, I always miss the last name. The Ballist, thank you. And they play. Our first part was to kind of go out and see what else was up. And so, we traveled Minnesota, we traveled down to Indianapolis. We looked at a lot of different programs to try to get best practice idea. Our program was really pitched as a strength-based program and inclusive to all students. What we saw as we went out there were a lot of great programs, but not many of them were integrated. And so, our opportunity really is to create something, I think, that's gonna be very unique and comparable across the state and perhaps the nation. We have a Trefford approach, we have a way of thinking about children's strengths, we have ways about teaching to them and those talents. So, we gathered some best practices, we have some policy procedures from other places, we have some of their assessment tools, we have some curriculum examples. So, we're gathering good information as we travel. We also had an opportunity to have a little bit of media exposure from our state superintendent of the year. General 58 out of Milwaukee came up and spent some time here, as well as the Trefford Center, and had a Thursday night short segment and then a Sunday longer segment that'll feature the Trefford Way at the school. So, thank you for that. That was kind of fun for us to do. We've had a lot of inquiries about what it is, what are you doing? So, we've tried to be inclusive. We created a survey. Survey has, I think, 38 respondents so far, both teachers and potential parents of children that may be interested. We're gathering information in, what are you looking for, what kinds of things would you like to see, how would this fit best? We have an opportunity to enroll 42 students in the first year. First will be the North Fond du Lac, and then we'll open it up to lottery for the remaining spots. We're targeting January for that registration. We talked a lot about where we fit. And honestly, we want to fit right in the Oriole Nation. We won't be separate, not like an X-Men school or anything different. Orioles is, Orioles is what we are. And so, our sister kind of charter school that's mentoring us is in Ripon. And they have a nice example on their website where you just hit a drop-down menu. And so, it's just another one of the schools. So, we're just another one of the schools within your guys' authority district. But we are separate and we form a 501(c)(C). And that nonprofit is what really kind of funds our school and runs that. You guys are the governance board. But that gives us enough distance and the charter that we'll have to do some unique opportunities. We'll be able to assess our students differently. We'll still be held to curriculum and state standards, but we will be able to look at some of their unique talents and skills and abilities. And that's really what we want. We really want to focus on that. We have an opportunity to, again, move them through lots of experiences, both from volunteering in the community as well as early job experience and exposure. Because we really want to have that opportunity for successful employment engagement in the community for everyone. We think about it as an integrated program. You already have a great example behind you, robotics club, and sports and activities, music, drama, all of the cool things that come with your school district. And we want to integrate into that with what we have, an opportunity to spend $700,000 towards to create something pretty cool. We're partnering with community partners. So, we're looking at Boys and Girls Club, perhaps the YMCA, as we think about what that vision of a building might look like. And in general, I would say that our shared vision at this point is really like you would see on college campus, the pub, where you have these high-tech areas, high music, arts, drama. You have computers, and that reflects a lot of our board members. We have Ms. Net, we have gentleman, Dr. Al Patterson, who wrote a book on leadership. We have Lori, who's, you know, been an advocate, an extraordinaire, is known in the state, knows the legislature, is kind enough to let us know, use my name for that one. Maybe for this one. And so, we just have a lot of-
She's an excited mom.
But those moms are our experts, right? You know, and so, it's really that, is trying to create this community and this opportunity for a unique way of teaching some very exceptional minds. So, we're excited. We thank you for the opportunity. I'm not sure if I missed anything from the team. If you want to give the cover, is that pretty good? All right. And thank you guys again, and thank you for this opportunity.
And I want to thank Beth and Dr. Dallo and Karen, also Lori. If you've heard of LFI, she was a driving force working with Jenna Wiegand and Deb Ellinger to get LFI going. Her son was kind of the impetus, if you, the pilot for that. And also Megan Putty, along with some other very talented people that sit on the board for the Trefford Way. This will be a really, it's gonna be neat, it's already been an awesome opportunity. And I'll make sure from a legal standpoint, the role of the board standpoint, that as we continue down this journey, you'll know what that is and what the role is and how we hold the Trefford Center. A lot of it comes down to that charter, like 14 different things, like you're gonna do X, Y, and Z, you're gonna get X, Y, and Z, and this is how we'll assess you on that. The home for the Trefford Center next year will be pretty much where the kindergarten is right now. The daycare pretty much will stay where the daycare is at right now, because it really is, there's construction only going on the west side of ELC. And then the idea is, our big area, Dash's goal, is to raise private funding to build a separate building for the Trefford Way for the fall of 2020. So, pretty exciting. So, also, as you go through, if you go to the website, we also have it on a drop-down, so it's right there. But if you have any questions, if you hear anything from the community, great resources, and we'll have somebody every month come in for five, 10 minutes, maybe give a little bit of example of how the curriculum's looking, or ideas, or timelines, things like that. But I want to thank them, they've done their vision and their efforts to get this here and then to have. Dr. Trefford's a big deal. I mean, if you meet him, you wouldn't think it, but this guy could have all of this in Dubai or in Paris, but he chooses Fond du Lac. And then because of the great effort and the great working relationship and the talent we have, they choose North Fond du Lac to partner with. So, we're very blessed to be at the cutting edge of something to serve all kids, no matter where they are in their learning. Any questions?
Yeah, the example you pointed to in Ripon, what's the name of that?
Journey.
Journey?
Journey. Every school that's opening this year has a mentor provided to them, so they were allotted with us because of elementary and a lot of similarity, fair enough. Not a story, project-based, learning.
I guess one question that popped up in my mind is, has this been developing as a connection with the Agnesians, the Trefford Center there? Corrected, is there, there must be some interaction and-
So, we have, we have some expertise in unique learning styles. And so, looking at each child for their strengths, the Trefford approach, the six-step approach, we'll provide training. We're gonna bring in some national, international folks to do some training and all staff. We want this to be inclusive of all of North Fond du Lac and actually beyond, you know. And so, we'll host conferences. We have one where Trevor Clark, for example, will be coming from Australia. He'll present on some exceptional minds in learning and tailoring education to those unique abilities. And that's good for all kids. And so, I think what we have as the Trefford Center and the Trefford Approach is some technical expertise, but we also rely on our great NM teachers and your guys at the school board. And so, it's a partnership in that way. The 503(c)(C) will be a separate entity from both Agnesian and SSM, as well as from your school district. And that allows that ability to create new opportunities and educational conditions, I guess, that are under the standards that you guys are operating under. And so, a little bit of, you know, buffer, there's that contract that clearly finds roles. And then there's, you know, this kind of name recognition and expertise that that Trefford Approach and Trefford Way brings that can have, I think, a good, good amount of attention and resources available to make this a success together in partnership.
Could you next, maybe next time, a great thing would be, like you did with the admin team, to explain what the Trefford Way is. I think that then would be a really good way for you guys to teach her, what is this school all about and what does it really mean to teach to a talented? What will this kind of look like? So, maybe if I'd recommend in December, come and just, you know, maybe have a graph or someone with the Trefford Ways, I think that would be very helpful. Because I, and look, I think about myself, and this would have been a great thing for me growing up, I think. You know, just that this ability to focus on stats, and I probably would have been a fantasy football player before, believe me. But yeah, so I think that could be very good. And also, Steve, that's a really good, there's confusion because the Trefford Center is separate than the Trefford Way. So, those are, and the charter will be with the Trefford Way. Now, the Trefford Way will be an instrumentality of the school district North Fond du Lac. So, all of the employees will be hired by the district. You will, the board will have to approve those. The budget, everything is made by the Trefford Way board, but all that focus, it funnels right through the school district too. So, there's a lot of cohesion, if you will, together, and a lot of that for auditing and to make sure that we can be as efficient as possible. But there is also enough separation so that they can really garner resources that aren't, maybe are some private foundations and groups that really want to invest in this type of opportunity for kids.
You may have answered this already, but because it's still part of the district, how does the standardized testing work? Does that even have anything to do with them? Do they have to do any of that?
To some degree, yes. You know, the issues that we can look at are a different approach to assessment. So, we're going to meet the curriculum requirements, we're going to work, but how we do that is really where we have more flexibility. You know, if I had a statistician that was able to do lots of these things, we can really build a whole curriculum around that that may fit well into showing areas of expertise across a variety of dimensions, but not fit necessarily in standardized assessment. So, we think about modifications that we can make, the opportunity to test and assess in a different way in order to demonstrate those gains is really what we're capable of doing. As opposed to a more traditional setting, you have pretty strict guidelines about who can and can't do what during standardized assessment. Does that make sense?
The Trefford Way will have a report card too. So, it'll be another building with a report card that will have all the, and we'll go over those in a little bit. But so, it'll be assessed based on some assessments that the state requires, but the way they get to, get to those gets very, very different.
Got a little more, and to focus on those strengths, you know, the Trefford Approach and the six things that we can talk about next time in more detail are essential for all, all of them, you know. And this isn't just about, you know, kids with unique skills and ability, but it's about those talents that are involved in all of us. I'm excited about it. I think the opportunity to partner across all of the different campuses and the inclusive of them, what I would consider is a push and a pull, you know, where our kids and your kids and all kids are within the Oriole Nation. We just have these resources and this way of approaching that that may be more successful because we can call it a charter. But that mentality and that kind of approach to education hopefully will be utilized across the city. So, again, thank you guys for the opportunity. Really very much appreciate it.
Feel free, you'll go on to the next part of your life.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, guys. Have a good one, safe travels. We're down to, we're down to some more hardcore people here, all right? Building project updates. I met with Liz Forbes, Allison, myself, to look at ELC and what that's gonna look like and how that can work. They're working on a plan that we can get out to bid, what timelines that, and I will have more in December for that. But it's looking pretty good. We got a lot of great options, also looking at possibly keeping that gym. There could be a savings by doing that and stuff. So, we're looking at all different options to see how we can best meet the needs of our students and community. So, more on that coming up. Also, I will be getting out at, right after the beginning of the year, I think we established like January 15th or somewhere there, about our next open house at Friendship. So, it's pretty cool. It is really, really coming along and looking really great. One up, just a side note really quick, Chad Novas from CD Smith, he's our superintendent there, is working with Mike McDowell to take the floorboards from the old horseman, Bessie Allen. And because what they're doing is they're refinishing them, and then those are gonna be the main, the steps of the main staircase at the new Friendship. So, that's what I really love about CD Smith, many things, but whenever there's an opportunity to working and then having Mike and Samantha and her team being able to say, yeah, whatever we can do to help and make our learning more worthwhile. So, our kids will have a part of building that school also, so that'll be pretty cool. All right, so now what I'll do at this time is I'll turn it over to Adam, and he will briefly go over our report cards. I'm very excited to tell you that we're green. This is a flashlight, this isn't the whole thing of who we are. We know we have a ton of way to go. I want to thank Adam in his time, he's very good at looking at information and details and finding where the data, the DPI polls data for our report card, which doesn't necessarily reflect how we've grown, it's just one date, one time. So, Adam did a great job looking at it, so we got credit for our demographics and what we've done. And that really was a big thing, that really made our report card, I think, reflective of who we are. We have growth to do, but I think it was a, I want to thank Adam because that was very, very, actually, I know that a lot of districts don't have that, don't have that ability or don't have the person that can really do that, to really make sure that it reflects who we are. So, I want to thank you very much for that. You're doing an awesome job, making sure our data really reflects us. So, both sides. So, no further ado, I'll turn it over to our Director of Teaching and Learning and go over the report cards.
All right. And this is, these report cards first started in the 2011, '12 year. So, for some of you that have been on the board since then, you've probably seen some of these before. I know for Sean and Paul, it's not the first thing you've seen on the details. So, what I'm gonna do, and certainly you guys jumped in with questions, I go through, but I'll kind of get just a brief overview of what goes into the report card, then I'll break down the report cards very briefly, some just points on why we got certain scores, just very kind of surface level. And then there'll be some changes next year, which has kind of been a change almost every year, so I'll kind of highlight some of those and what we look forward to next year. So, so if you want to put a report card up here first, and so, you know, behind you there, in your board packet, this is just our district report card. But basically, what is on here, like Aaron alluded to, this is looking at for the district and for the schools, just our state assessment data and attendance and graduation data. So, it's just, you know, those data points. And for certain levels, we're still going back to like the old state assessment, which would be a WKCE test, you remember that? And even the Badger exam and the Ford exam. For the high school report, there's still some WKCE and ACT when just some students took the ACT and ACT when every student now is taking the ACT. So, again, there's just lots of different years that come into play when we look at these calculations as well. So, and it's also looking at not just, it's looking at grade level and building level achievement and growth. And also, the report cards look at subgroup achievement and subgroup growth. So, puts all those pieces together, and then it spits out, for all those calculations, spits out a number out of 100. So, I always talk about, if you ever want to see what the calculations are, there's a DPI packet that I think is 74 pages long, which I've gone through and read, which is awesome. And so, that kind of breaks down more, how do they get this score for this? So, there's a lot that goes into it, a lot of algorithms and things that I don't even completely understand, but I know enough to be dangerous. So, and then the other piece that I want to mention with each report card, the four main areas that you see in that section right there, student achievement, growth, closing gaps, and that on-track readiness, those can be weighted different depending on the district, depending on the school, you know, within a district, based on economically disadvantaged percentages. So, one thing new they added this year is that area that Aaron's highlighting right now that says priority weights. So, that's new, and it shows you which, how much each score is impacting that overall score on the report card. So, again, if you look at that for each of our buildings, you might see it's a little bit different. Or if you look at the weight for another district, it's gonna be different. So, again, it's not a universal weight, and they tried to kind of level the playing field, so to speak. And they just did that, I want to say maybe about three years ago. They did that before, it was just everyone was weighed the same based on- that before, it was just everyone was weighted the same based on nothing having to do with that poverty rate, so.
And what that tries to do is take like, if you have a Kohler versus us, we have very different demographics, not good, bad, or different, but they're weighted more on achievement than on growth. So it just kind of takes and, and that's where a big part of how ours get weighted, what that Adam did a great job is to make sure that our, our data reflects what our students are.
And the other new piece, again, if you haven't looked at these report cards too much, you probably don't even know us these things, but the other new piece that's on every report card this year across the state is that bottom box that says test participation. None of that went into any of the calculations, but it's just being reported, and that was part of the ESAA laws that came out that every school in this district has to report how much testing, test participation that school has. So we didn't have to have another scoring, but the state said you had to have it on your report card. So again, for the most part, if you don't look at these as often as I do, it probably looks very similar to what it has in the last couple of years. So basically we love just a quick go through each report card, it's around the district one, just give a kind of a general of why this score changed and why we have the rate just kind of at that surface level, there's a lot more that goes into it, so if you have questions, certainly jump in, but our district report card, where that exceeds expectations, it's the first time we've ever had that score at a district level, and that's our highest score that we've had out of 100 in all the years that they've had a report card, so that's a good thing. Last year we were, I think every year the district has increased a little bit on that report card, but we've made a bigger jump this year. And really the biggest difference was the graduation rate gap, which is only for the high school, because that's the only place where kids graduate from in our district is our high school. So that number really made a huge jump, which impacted both the district report card and the high school report card, that we'll see in a second. So that was a, probably a major difference from last year to this year in what we saw that gain. Kind of that ELA map data points that they're looking at was kind of a wash, we'll talk about some buildings did a little bit better in ELA, some did a little bit better in math, and on the district report card, they kind of evened out and reconnected the same scores across the board as far as the calculations go. So the biggest change was the graduation rate. For Friendship, our score went down a little bit this year, so last year we were at 73, which put us in that, just in that exceeds expectations this year, where we're still agreeing where that meets expectations. So for that, you know, our literacy achievement went down a little bit and when that goes down, it kind of causes some of those gaps to go down, it causes then some of that growth to go down as well. And our math went up a little bit in some areas, which kind of helped that literacy score and, but basically some of our literacy achievement going down caused us some of the points that we had last year and, you know, otherwise, you know, really that, I think highlighting that math gap piece, that was a score that really helped limit some of those literacy scores that went down for the elementary school, so. And then for the middle school, this is another building that our score went down, we were at a 70, almost 75 last year and down to a 70, so they were at exceeds expectations two years in a row and this year it meets expectations. The piece here too was a little bit the opposite of the elementary school was the math scores. So our math scores had just had a, had a not so great trend the last two years, so if they would have been kind of where they, math scores had been at historically, going back maybe two or three years, our score would have been a lot higher at the, at the middle school and literacy keeps going up, those gaps and those school growth scores for the middle school keep going up and, you know, even with our achievement at the middle school, Mike and I have talked about, we're getting really close to being at the state average as far as literacy achievement goes, which we've never been able to talk about that for any academic area, I don't think, in our district for a while. So that's a very cool thing that we have talked about, hey, we need to start thinking about setting that goal now, getting to state average, we had a lot of growth and a lot of great things happening, let's get to that state average, so. And with everything mentioned here too, we were pretty much well aware of what would happen with our data points, nothing really surprised us when we talked about the elementary school with anything with literacy or math in the middle school, we had plans in place before all this came out, so we knew, we saw those trends and knew, okay, let's, we need to figure out why this is happening and make those changes so that we get that back on the right track. So everything that is a concern, we knew it was gonna be a concern because we saw that in other assessments too and we already have plans going on and all the buildings to impact that, so it's nothing that we're not aware of or working on.
Could you mention what you and Mike are working on with an article coming up? Could you bring that up?
Sure, and again, it kind of ties into sort of literacy achievement and gains we've seen the last few years, we just got a contact from what sounds in.
RTX, yeah.
State RTX, and they just said, hey, would you be willing to be a school success story? We want to interview you, Mike and myself, and just kind of use you guys on newsletters and publications and just talk about, hey, if you do things this certain way, these are what the index can't need, so get great cred to the staff at the middle school, to Mike's leadership. And also I had some talks too nationally with, out in Northwest, like the Oregon area where they started PBAU, so they've kind of had some interest too, so Mike, Mike go up there too and share, so try to spread Oriole Nation across.
We'd be cool with Pacific Northwest.
Pacific Northwest. We'll make foot out there too, so. So again, just everything that, really no surprises, things that we, we knew we would be working on, so this didn't change, we had that talk in administrative team, nothing changed because we saw these scores, everything we had planned to work on this summer because we knew what the data was showing, we had those plans in place and expect great things to happen. High school, big jump here, kind of like I mentioned before, but last year they were at 61, now almost at a 69, so a huge increase and, and actually a couple pieces here, that graduation rate jumped up huge for us as far as those rate gaps, so that's looking at all the gaps, again, look at those subgroups. So for our district, we have subgroups in, and actually at the high school, the only sub that were big enough, because it's only 11th grade or 12th grade graduation would be our poverty rate, so kids that are economically disadvantaged, how well did those students do when it came to graduation compared to that state rate? So we did very well with that and I always tell Samantha how great it is about, how great she is working with her staff and students to get kids to graduate and that can be a challenge, but she does a great job with that. And the state looks at four-year graduation rate for these calculations and a six-year rate. So we did really, I think, we had one kid that did not graduate in that six-year cohort at the high school, which was amazing when it came to these calculations and really did increase that score at the high school. And then also our gap scores at, for literacy at the high school increased a lot from the past year, which made, caused that score to be, for closing gaps, even higher than it would have been, so. And again, there was, I'm trying to think of those, the subgroups there, but I think it was, again, the economically disadvantaged subgroup really outperformed the state group, opposite state groups that helped that score as well at the high school, so. And kind of a change I'll get to in a second, or I'll talk a little more about, at the high school, there is no growth score because they're just going off of that ACT that our 11th graders take, but next year the change will be that they are gonna have a growth score where they'll have our ninth and 10th graders who take the ACT aspire, they're gonna use those scores to then be able to show growth, how are our students growing through time. So we'll have that score new across the state for all the high schools and that's why that way is just a little bit goofy, one thing piece here or there at the high school really makes a big impact because there's just not as many pieces in the puzzle.
Can you define school growth? What, what growth, what does it mean?
Yeah, and that's, so the school growth is really, you know, kind of a cool thing for us with, with some of our numbers, it's a value-added piece. So they're looking at how much growth can we get in our district compared to just an average school in the state. So anytime we're above that state average, that means that, hey, you give us the average sixth and eighth graders, we're gonna do more of them in literacy than any other school in the state or than other schools in the state. So anytime we're above that, that's a great thing, and anytime we're below that, we're saying, okay, why are we not getting that?
You're talking scores, that's what you're talking about.
Yep, so just looking at those math and ELA scores and how well our students do. So we'll get, you know, what's a typical sixth grader do and then what do we get that typical sixth grader do in our district, so. And I think at the middle school, again, our girls' score, math really took a hit last year, we were up in the eighties for that subgroup or that subcategory, but on the math did go as well as it will be in the future, so. But yeah, that's a value-added piece, I love when we can say, hey, we can do more with students, or we do more with students than the average school in the state does, so that's a nice talking point when we have that about the state average. Again, I can talk a lot more, give you a lot more information, but I just want to, before I get to some of the changes for next year, just let you guys ask any questions you might have or tell me the big, a little deeper, talk more about any, any data point for an report card.
I have one question, some of these data points, like about school information, do things like economic disadvantage, then does that impact our scores in terms of like how the weighting worked?
Yep, so that's where it impacts that weighting area on there. So if we have more, a higher poverty rate, it will look at more of that growth. And that just has, I've seen the research on kids in poverty tend to not achieve as well in school or grow as fast because some of those opportunities early on in life, they maybe don't have access to that. One data point is for every 300 kids in poverty, there's one book for every 300 kids in poverty. So if you can imagine growing up with no books in the house or things like that, you're probably not gonna come to school as ready as some of that has grown up and they're like a literacy-rich environment, so. Not saying that's the case for our students, but that's just what the research says and why they, the state wanted that, weighing and looking at that poverty rate as change in that weight depending on the school.
So then, like Friendship Learning Center is at almost 58%, is that something where typically the elementary school has a greater population of economically disadvantaged students and it slowly gets?
I would say it's probably the same, but what happens is you have, you have parents, that's all based on free and reduced lunch qualification.
That's what that is.
So what happens when you get to the high school, I am sure that we probably have just as many students that qualify, maybe even more, because sometimes they're, they're, they have less support, it's just that they don't fill up the paper. So that's all based on free and reduced lunch paper.
Okay. Okay. Parents don't tell us, they don't follow that kind of.
And then like Adam said, growth is the most important thing to us. Growth and closing gaps, meaning that it doesn't matter what color you are, where you are in your learning journey, disabilities, you should have equal opportunity to learn. And then the growth is, you know, wherever somebody comes at us, maybe they didn't have a rich learning environment growing up, but they do now, so we should be able to impact them. Which will all lead right to achievement.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does. Was there any, was any of this a surprise, like as the data was coming in?
Not really, one thing we've looked at, or I've looked at really close the last couple of years, is how, you know, we have a balanced assessment system. So we have these state assessments, we have local assessments in all of our buildings that we do because we pay for an assessment tool to get fall, winter, spring data, we have assessments going out daily in our district. So we match those up, they, for the most part, speak to what we see in our state assessment, so it wasn't a, gosh, we're scoring really well on this test, but now the state assessment was kind of, hey, we saw, we see this upward trend in literacy, on the state assessment, we're seeing that same upward trend with our local assessments, or we're seeing this downward trend with math, we're, hey, we're seeing that too with this assessment, so that, that's the kind of doctor piece that really gives us more information to say, hey, we've gotta look at this and figure out how we change this trend because it's not just a fluky, bad data test, it's happening across a couple of assessments, or, hey, this is really good piece of data here, we've gotta figure out how we can replicate this other place because this is, you know, we know this is not just a fluky thing, it's happening because of things we've done to consider, so. So yeah, so from my end, nothing that really jumped up, oh gosh, I thought this was important, I'll see if it'll line up with what we show on other assessments. Other questions? And I'll just end with giving you a heads up for next year. All right, so next year, talk a little bit about, at the high school, we'll have that extra area that we've never had before across the state, so that student growth piece will be there, so we'll, we'll see how that impacts things, the state did put out this year, just a kind of district for every high school, if we did do growth this year, here's what your scores would have been. So we did get to see that, I'm sure that with Samantha and Aaron, and basically, you know, seems pretty similar to what we have as far as our growth at other buildings, so it's not gonna be anything, you know, again, we'll see how kids do this year, but, you know, it seems to fall on right where we kind of see other growth fitting for other buildings, so nothing that was concerning there when I looked at that and ideally it's gonna be better than that because we're doing the right thing with the work that we're doing in the district. The other piece is that will be on the report card for the high school, and they haven't really said it's gonna be a calculation out there and start to report volunteer hours, community service hours. They haven't said that's gonna be part of the calculation or not, but they want to report that, part of the federal laws that have come out, the ESAA. And then also college career ready, they want to have some of those measures on that high school report card, not sure if it'll be part of the calculation for next year, but those are the things they want to report and, you know, those will be good things for us and we have our kids doing some of those volunteer hours right now and have a, you know, part of just being good citizens within the community and then with college and career ready, we have a lot of courses we offer that while we're, we'll help us in that area and Samantha does a great job with that, so. Those will be some new things coming up that every high school will have on their report cards around next year. And then the other piece, just looking ahead with the closing gaps, we're probably gonna see a decrease in closing gaps, it'll be across the state. So all the state averages are in decrease as far as closing gaps go at the district level, high school, elementary, just because there's something known as the Badger exam bump. So when the Badger exam came out, everyone did really well on that test for whatever reason, and I think it sounded like the state kind of reworked some of those cut scores to make us, as a state, look a little bit better. So next year, that will be the first score on our five-year trend for closing gaps. So the state's gonna have a really high score and then all the other scores are gonna look lower, that, that line's gonna kind of slope downward, same thing for the high school, same thing for the district, same thing for the elementary school. So we'll kind of see how that goes, because they'll compare our slope lines to the state line, so it might just be a wash. At the middle school, with some of the work that we did, we actually have an opposite trend, we beat that Badger bump, which is very unusual, so the high school line is gonna, it's, its trend line's gonna be going up where the state average is gonna be going down, so that's gonna really have an impact on the middle school report card for that area. We should see, you know, really good results from that, that piece, so. And that's some of the pieces with the report card, sometimes because how they calculate it, one year falling off of a fifth year or one year falling off of a third year measure that they look at can be good or bad because it's falling off, so that's why it's not an exact science, but just a snapshot or a flashlight. And then again, hopefully it's no surprise that we already knew what are those things that we need to improve on our edge, so that we're already at a game working on this.
And does it get difficult from year to year and you try to avoid comparing this year's scores too much with, actually because, you know, you're out of luck, numerous things that DPI or whoever's, this is changing, adjusting, fixing, plus you have, you know, 100 new kids in each school and 100 different, they're all leaving each year, so the students are different. So I would think it'd be more of a trend, overall trending look instead of comparing this year to, I think, two years ago or last year to next year, things like that.
Yeah. And I think you're exactly right, to worry about a couple numbers up and down every year on any mark in any part of the report cards probably isn't gonna do us much good, but looking at that trend over time, okay, where are we, where are we trending? Because there has been so many changes with, and we have to get, in some cases, three different assessments going into the calculations where eventually, hopefully we'll get to the spot where, hey, it's just the Ford exam is the one universal test for all the calculations or just the ACT, we're not quite there yet, but we're getting closer to that, so that might breed some more consistency, but, you know, again, for me, when I look at all the assessments, we haven't put it all together, that's where we get the picture of, okay, where are we at, what do we need to work on, where do we need to improve and, so yeah, I think you're right on that, it's a little bit of a challenge, that's why we don't put all our eggs in one basket or hit the panic button when we see one data point we look at and decide, okay, is there something to this where we need to start to look at an improvement in that area or celebrate this because there's something to this for the exciting data we're seeing too. Does that answer your question or?
I think it's, you know, this year's score needs to be looked at as just this year and last year's, because it's valid and then last year's scores are valid because of the stuff that was based on last year. So in a general, one number thing, which has always been a problem with standard testing is, is difficult to do that.
Yeah.
Compared year to year.
For sure. And every district, just so you guys know, every district has that couple points difference up or down, just depending on, again, that, that year and that, that one day in most cases that they're taking that assessment, so.
And I'm really happy about the future of these, I mean, what career and college readiness, that's something we're already looking at to see what, how many, what percentage, you know, we want 100% career ready, certain percentage college ready and everyone life ready, and they're gonna have a metrics to measure that and port that out, volunteer hours, we know that's very important when we care for other people and look When we care for other people and look out for other people and install that in our kids. I'm just, I'm really, Adam has really helped us understand this more and more. But I really feel that this is a good flashlight, that when the right data's in there, that actual data, I mean, every school district, when we talk about, well, it's a standardized test, they're all in the same pool. So that's what I like about this. It's a nice way of comparing things and how it kind of looks. But it gives us a little bit of a map, it kind of gives us a snapshot. And I think this accurately reflects where we're at, I think we can improve. Our goal is, is that we want to be four stars at every school, for sure. And we always want to outbeat, or we always want to be at or above in district growth, or in growth of our students, period. No matter where somebody comes in, we want to get more out of them in one year than normal. I think we kind of, as much as people have struggled with this, I think this has really evolved into a pretty good tool just to have.
I just have one question. So in the student groups, with the students with disabilities, are there? So students with disabilities, are some of those also in the percentage of the economically disadvantaged? So it's all, it's not just one category, they can be in all three?
Yeah.
And the data shows that our students that are in subgroups are actually doing very well. Well, the students that we, that probably are getting outpaced are our non, are white, non, low social economics students that really, that are lagging more than any other group. Would you concur?
Yeah, I think, you know, there are some student groups that we do need to look at and, you know, are not trending in the right direction, but some that are doing very well. And yeah, I think just universally, from the work that we shared a few months ago, I think, with looking at the standards and really reviewing those, establishing, hey, what is really critical learning for our kids in each content area? And now we're starting, and next month, hopefully, we'll have a team come in and give you an update. But we're starting to deconstruct those standards and say, okay, what does this standard mean? What does it look like in student behaviors and student skills? So that work is, you know, I think sometimes our rigor could be a little bit better than what it is. And I think we're kind of seeing that too, that, hey, we've done maybe standard-like instruction, but we really get to make tricks on standard-like, but it is right to what that standard is. And we're not, we're not, you know, for lack of better words, dumbing that down because, you know, we don't have time or we don't understand what it is, but we want to be really clear on what we want kids to learn, and we want them to learn at a high level. So, yeah, so I would say that's a group, and all groups we want to see improved.
I know this is just one tool, but do results from these report cards actually directly translate into changes in curriculum made in the classroom, you know, quickly? Or is this just one of the many tools that helps you make those shifts?
Yeah, and before these come out, we get all the assessment data first, so that I'm starting to, you know, I can start to look at, okay, I bet you we're going to score higher in this area when it comes to calculations, but we've already done our talking as an administrative team and talking with our stats too, about, okay. Again, it's either reinforcing a negative trend, or it's reinforcing a positive trend that we're seeing. And we've already started to analyze this way before this comes out. So usually, we get state test results back, end of the school year, early summer, so we can start analyzing that and not waiting for this to come out. So again, the report card, when we talked to the admin team, when this came out, it wasn't a, oh, gosh, we better either panic, inducement totally different. No, we've already established plans because we knew where our data was, and we're going to stay true to those plans. So, yeah, so I guess to answer your question, we, yeah, it's just, it's putting it all into a number, but it doesn't really impact. We've already created those plans beforehand.
So when you create those plans, let's just say this year, whatever, it was not as good as you expected. So, and you already knew that was coming. So how long then do you expect it to take for those numbers to turn around?
Sure.
A year, three years?
I'm a little naive, but my expectation is right away. You know, I develop a plan thinking it's going to, it's going to work right away, not five years from now or any of those things. So I wouldn't say, hey, let's create a plan, so then it works five years from now, let's create a plan, so it changes lives immediately. So one example, say, at the middle school of math, we started talking about math probably about a year and a half ago, and started to show that this trend we were seeing to our middle school math team to say, hey, we're seeing this on state assessments, we're seeing this in our assessments. I think there's something to this, you know, and started having conversations about it, started to look at, okay, what could we do differently that we aren't already doing, and started to do some pilots on, hey, what if we purchase this math tool to work with students in addition to their math class, and see if this has an impact? So we piloted that and saw it work right away and worked for students. So, okay, now let's kind of magnify that and use that for more students and see what we get. So we're in the midst of doing that at the middle school level to, and we've already seen a month or so in that that's working really well for some students, although could stop working, sure, but we're, right now, it's working really well, so we're going to keep on turning that and see what progress it has as the year goes on, so.
And we took 18 students and put them in a special study hall at the end of the day with kind of growth. And we used that same tool that we purchased as an intervention for those students. And out of those 18 students, I think 13 or 14 showed at least a year's worth of growth in only nine weeks. The other four or five are kind of working. They didn't show any drastic losses, but they're kind of, they're still struggling a little bit. But one student wants to take the test over again, and they're badgering us to take, they want to show that they didn't do well that day. So I think in the future, as we consider schedule changes in the format for BAMS and having daily intervention periods, we're going to start doing that, taking groups of students and putting them in interventions with math teachers. And hopefully, that will help improve their scores, but their skills are more important than scores.
It's an art form, you know, because you get to that patience too of, you know, like some of those kids that aren't quite showing the gains we want right now. It's okay, maybe they'll show that in 10 weeks. So, or in 12 weeks, or maybe 18 weeks. So it's, you know, it's always that balance act a little bit, but yeah, from my mind, when we make a change, I expect it to work right away. Otherwise, I wouldn't say, why would we even try this? We don't think it's going to work right away.
And so do most of, and this, because I'm just curious how it all works. So is this something that you go into this team and say, hey, we need to do better on this, this is what we're going to do? Or is it the teacher saying, oh, I really think that this would help her work, or you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think both ways, kind of depends on the situation with the math piece at the middle school, that example. We didn't hear much from the math team as far as them coming to us, but we started to see that and brought them alongside to say, hey, what are you noticing? And just kind of tried to get an idea of, okay, what, why do you think this is happening or isn't happening? And just had a collaborative conversation about that. And, you know, and in that middle school case too, we've had some turnover in our seventh grade math position. Not, just that happened sometimes, so we thought, okay, that probably had a factor on some of the math scores not being historically where they have been. And so, but, you know, obviously, the biggest piece, when you start to look at, before you make a change, is looking at that information to say, okay, making sure people understand what the information is saying. Then kind of, you know, it's pretty easy to buy, and when you see certain numbers that are black and white and say, okay, yeah, this is not going the direction we want, we need to do something and look at this and create a plan and make sure the plan's going to work for our students. So, but we have had the other, and like you said, Vicki, that teachers come to us and say, hey, I'd like to try something, what do you think? And then we've done that too. And for mine, I always want to, you know, I'm always open to trying anything, but I also want to make sure we monitor that to know, is it working? Because if it's working, it probably could work for other kids or in other buildings. If it's not working, let's take that time and spend it somewhere else. So that's always on my radar, and let's try stuff, but let's not spend too much time, you know, two years if it's not working, you know, but and if it is working, let's start to maybe, do we need to replicate that and share that with other people so that it can work in other places?
All right, well, thank you, Adam. And next, we have future board still policy updates. I've got probably about half of those done. Probably have that in February, January, December-ish. So that's working, nothing really drastic, just a lot of different things, but takes time. Calendar I'll have available, I'll get it out to staff probably in the next couple of weeks, of what 18, what 19, sorry, not 19, 18, 19, 20 looks like. It's going to be pretty standard, starting right around Friday after Labor Day, and right September 1st, and going from there. Staff compensation met twice, looking to meet another time, and passing out different models to look at how we can develop a better compensation model for our staff. Holiday concerts, Wednesdays are our big holiday concerts coming up, so get ready for that. Board signature period, we have Pete and Paula's positions at our open seats. Amy has the booklet, and we can get you all set up with whatever you need so that you can get out and start to get 30 signatures. That's what legally now we all, we need is 30 to get on the ballot. So we know we have two open seats, and as I know right now, I believe that two people on open seats are looking to still run until we hear any difference. So that's exciting. To have a non-write-in election will be very exciting. Not that we didn't do well with write-ins. Pretty good, I think.
We did great.
Yeah, we're looking at two, yeah. And then the next meeting remembers December 17th. So that's, instead of doing it on Christmas Eve, we'd have figured we'd do it on the 17th, so it's the third Monday till that. Be coming up soon, but we had an extra week in November, so should be seen about normal. And then we just have to make sure with the board convention that we have everybody, I think everybody's in on Thursday, we'll have a table reserved for you. We have the hotels, where we're in a hotel right by the convention center, we'll probably move to one of the two hotels that are connected as those open up. But otherwise, I'm thinking, he's got us all registered and rocking and rolling, you just got to let me know for sure. I think we have the dates. I'll send out a confirmation, so I can break and look at it and make sure it's all right. Administrative report, anything that you guys want to add? I do want to thank Samantha and Maria, along with the rest of the team, but I know those two kind of spearheaded. Today, I was at Rotary, and my daughter Lily is a Rotary Student of the Month. And she had to go first, but Joe Brown, who's a Rotarian, and also Dr. James Seabird invited me to watch her speak. She had to leave right away because she had a test, so she did the speech at Rotary, left, and then there was a nice presentation of somebody who does a lot of our sign work, Nicole, that lost a kidney, and then all of a sudden, it was her and then the person who donated a kidney touching story. I'm getting my phone's blowing up. We got an emergency texting me, Sam's calling me, you got to leave, I've got a problem with the staff member. Dave says there's a big problem, like, what's going on? So I get up, tell Steve, leaving from Hurrican Bay, I got to go. And I stand, because I was right in the middle table while they were talking, so I sneak out, and they won't tell me anything. I was actually getting pretty angry with Dave. I don't think I was ever that short with you, like, can't you just tell me anything? No, just get here. So I'm driving about 80 or 85, thank goodness it wasn't in Rosendale. Then I come, and I park, and then lo and behold, when I walked into the gym, all the high school, middle school students and staff and everything was there, and congratulated me on the honor that I've been very pleased to be part of the superintendent of the year. So I want to thank you guys very much. It's a huge deal, not just that, but the cake and just all the kind words and all the work. If it wasn't for the people here, there's no way I'd be able to do what I did. And whenever somebody, there's so many people excited about this, and it just, it warms, it just feels so good because it's, the reason I'm successful is 100% based on everybody else. And I really, really appreciate that. So thank you guys very much and for all that you do to make me look good. You guys also, I mean, it's very rare that superintendent lasts 10 years when only one board member is still on the board that hired them. So I want to thank Steve for that, and then the rest of you for not running me out of town.
And I never voted for you that time.
That's right. That's right. That was, that was a 4-0-1, but that's cool, that's cool. But thank you guys very much, and thanks. All right, anything you guys want to share?
I got a couple. That was wonderful. I wanted to mention that. I think this is the first formal monthly board meeting since you were announced as the winner of that award, and appreciative. You know, we are, I'm sure the board members will agree that you have the superintendent of the year here in our final, a very well-deserved award. Challenge Day, that was since the last meeting, I believe, too, and I enjoyed that again. And encourage if your schedules work, because I hope we can continue this every year. Just amazing to me in the small groups, the cross-the-line exercise at the end is just, I think, almost life-changing and stuff, but the small group. Last year, the dynamic that struck me, three, four, or five regular-looking high school kids. And when I heard them open up finally as the day progresses, and I think kind of coerces them into opening up, that kind of thing. The number of them, almost all of them, parents were split, and how they blame themselves for their parents breaking up. This year, I think the dynamic that I had noticed was a little bit different, just the family situations of how old some of those kids are. And, you know, I'm just stunned by looking at them, they look like normal high school kids. And they are, you know, but just hearing their stories and being able to be part of that, I sure appreciate that, and hope we can continue that too. So, and then the last thing, I just, you know, this is a little out of the ordinary, but I just wanted to make mention of the recent passing of Pat Kaloski-Johns, former court member. Mary, you know her well, I'm sure, I've been next door to her all those years. But she was quite a character, quite an interesting lady. But the reason, we're in the midst of the referendum in the building here, and she was very important to the building, the high school back in 98, 99. I remember her really pushing for that in the past with the senior citizens. And she talked about how people provided us with good schools back in the 30s and 40s. And I think she graduated at the top of her class, she always mentioned that. So she was just a great lady, and a friend of education, I would say, in our final, so wanted to make mention that.
And we also lost Arnie. All right, well, then we move on to new business.
Can I just add to, I just want to thank Steve and Vicki for attending Challenge Day. So it was, you know, our counselors and myself and a couple of other people participated in both days. And I've never been so tired in my life after that second day, but it was really good. We've had a couple, actually had a former student, Savannah Firehisen, come and participate as an adult, actually in both days, and she is interested in maybe starting to be the change group that can follow this group. And so I'm hopeful to work with her and some other people to get that going. Because again, we do see the value in it, we see it's, you know, really important to keep that connection with kids. You know, I heard you today with speaking for Erin, that you kind of gave a shout out to your group. And just the little things, you know, I see my members, and I had a couple of really quiet ones. And so they just give, you know, give me a fist bump in the hall, just to kind of as a, you know, hey, I'm here for you thing. And I'm very, very grateful that we were able to do it, so we will definitely keep doing it. And our goal is to make sure that every student goes through it. You know, Mike and I briefly have talked about, you know, what's the right thing for middle school? There's a different program out of Minnesota called, I think it's called the Final Frontiers or something like that. You know, so maybe she'll look at that, but, you know, I definitely want to keep Challenge Day for high school. And I'm just impressed, we've had different leaders last year, this year. Doesn't matter who they have, they're just phenomenal people in your life.
And I guess I did, a little over missing that, kind of finishing the point of, you know, not judging people based on these kids who, again, look like normal high school kids. Not to judge where they're at and what they're doing, or what their clothes they're wearing, or whatever, because you don't know that stuff that they talked about, that they just don't bring up or talk at all about. So I think that was, that was really important. And one of the people in my group at the last meeting we had here, a short meeting, there was a game going on in the gym, and one of the ladies was sitting at the concession table that they were working. And when I walked by, I luckily remembered her name and said hi to her on the way in. On the way out, I kind of waved to her, and she said, hey, I talked to my dad, which I knew what that meant. And I gave her a thumbs up or whatever, and said, great. And then she said, and I'm going to see my mom at Thanksgiving. So just that she felt okay enough, and I, you know, I didn't do anything, I just sat and listened there and things, so that was a really cool example too.
Awesome, all right. New business. Number one, discuss and consider a spring 2019 softball out of state trip. All right, thanks. Matt came, Coach Stebbacher and Smith had brought up, as Matt had alluded to about this opportunity. And I told Matt that any out-of-state trips, the initial time, need to be board-approved because there's a lot of different things, want to make sure that the board is okay. knows what's going on, so I'll turn it over to Matt to give you the details. And there's two things that can happen here, oh, three. Either the board can take up a vote or actually to not allow it, they could pick up a vote to allow it, or if you want more information and have some other, more stuff done that you want to mail it over, we can then, we can decide in December. So, but if you do feel compelled, that's okay after Matt, then you have that option.
No, I mean, so, let me talk again. That's what I alluded earlier, obviously, starting last spring, continuing through this summer and even now into this fall, the weather is not playing very well for our outdoor sports. To the point, last spring, we were basically having to cancel, reschedule soccer games, even, which is unheard of due to the weather, so both baseball and softball took a lot of hits on the chin, which made, I have to tip my hat to both Coach Stepbacher and Coach Smith, because they put in a lot of time and effort and called a lot of favors to some of their coaches. They came to me with this proposal of, would we be allowed to go out of state placing games over spring break? Which I had to work with, Erin and I had talked about, we had no idea. The W A allows for teams to go play games out of state, it's a simple form that they fill up the W A, just that any games that are played out of state comes towards their maximum allowed to play in the season. So, for example, I believe softball's allowed to play twenty-six games, so they play four games out of state, they only play until they're left the rest of the season. Coach Stepbacher put this together here, obviously, he's, Marcus Antoni, his daughter watching her play, but here's just a little idea of what they're planning on doing here and looking for your approval of this, obviously with taking kids out of state. We have, they have four varsity games scheduled and three varsity reserve games, J V games, scheduled. Of course, they are planning to, they would have a plan to leave on Sunday, March twenty-fourth, and return on Friday, March twenty-ninth. Transportation, in order to help keep costs down, with transportation, they would be using our school vehicles, so that'd be all three school vans and the expedition, so for, in addition to that, there'd be obviously some of the parents that would be going along to accompany their daughter on this trip, they would also provide transportation for their child and help all that stuff, too, and transportation and equipment. Hotel rooms, currently they are gathering some more information, they don't have it hammered down, but they're looking at different possibilities in trying to find hotel rooms, they're trying to balance out several factors, trying to find a hotel that is close to where they're playing, so they're not having a huge travel time, but also someplace that is close enough to other attractions because this is the girls' spring break. So the one thing I put an emphasis on to really challenge the coaches into trying to find is somebody that, reminding them that this is supposed to be not just about softball, but about letting these girls have an experience that they'll remember the rest of their lives. So the coaches are doing a great job trying to find that here, working with the local coaches down there, the teams that they plan on playing, that they want to play, to come up with ideas and itineraries of places to travel and start to see, looking forward to that. As of right now, just some preliminary numbers coming in, finding rooms where accommodate a minimum of four players in a room, that would also have laundry facilities, pool, fitness center, practice location, you name it. They're looking at it not exceeding a hundred thirty dollars per night for the room. So based on that, four players per room over the cost of five nights would come to a hundred and sixty-five dollars per player for the entire trip. Obviously, with them using the school vehicles, transportation costs to the players and to them would be none, because we would pick up the cost of transportation out of the athletic transportation budget, since they obviously, they would be playing here in state, would be busing them to some other place, we'd have to be renting buses and stuff like that, so that would come out of the school athletic transportation budget. So the hotel is there. Meals, they're averaging, they're figuring it's going to cost the players about twenty dollars per day to do that. The plan is to propose this, to go ask Ori Nation to help offset the cost of the meals for the girls, too, so we're not having to throw meals and extra stuff on top of that expense also. To help offset the cost of the hotel stays, trying to keep the cost as minimal as possible, the idea is that the coaches along with the players will be working at places like Culver's and Pizza Ranch as servers and then they are able to earn money proceeds, help go towards a pool of money to help lower the cost for everybody. So as of right now, the preliminary number with no fundraising, no nothing in there, is our goal is to keep this at a hundred and sixty-five dollar per athlete max to go on this trip for five days, which you do the math, we're talking, you know, just over thirty dollars per day.
And I don't know anything about this, so, but I do know that colleges, you know, that take teams down there have host families, I mean, has anybody reached out to maybe even Marion to see, so how do you get host families down in those areas so a couple of kids can stay, or is that just like?
It's something that we're looking, you know, I think there are things to look in the future, with this being the very first year, you know, I've been involved in athletics for close to twenty years and it's the first time, it was already been proposed as an idea for this year, I've never, you know, I've never heard of this before, even though I was up in Oshkosh, D1 school, do something like this, so this is, for a school of our size, undertake this type of project in the first year is something new and as we move along here, we're going to get better at it, but just getting that foundation work and those are things here as we move forward, getting that partnership and staying, what's the possibility of, if it is over spring break and talking to some of the other schools that do go on some of these trips, several schools will take their teams down to like Florida to play over spring break, because their players have a spring break in Florida. Obviously, that involves flights and stuff, so it's all that give and take, since we're providing the transportation, it's helping keep the cost down per player. I think it all works out for Washington, man, with that.
Who's driving?
The coaches, the, one of the initiatives, and this is where I'm gonna tip my hat to Maria, I think she's still behind me yet, I'm a big guy, so I don't get the side of yours. One thing that the school issue does is that, part of the other new business is that we approve for our coaches, you know, to be under contract and stuff, is that they submit their driver's license, stuff like this, to be able to drive our school vehicles and that they're also protected under our school insurance to transport these, transport these students, so we're looking at having coaches drive the vehicles down.
One, one thing that I just recommend, like, I would recommend, like, get an itinerary, get permission slips, what that all looks like. I would say that in order to do this, undertake, I know that Gary Keel had come one year and asked about Florida and there was, at that time, there's a costing, it's a different mentality, that's a different time, but I think about Jerry Scadella and what he has organized in order to present, in order to go to Florida, it's, it's a little bit, a little bit more structured, so that'd be one thing, is like what teams are playing, are we going to play, what are the hotels, all those things, specifics, I think would be helpful.
I don't want to speak for everybody, but I mean, I don't think any of us would say no, it's, it's just something that.
Well, the question that I have on cost is, you know, like the Washington D C trip or whatever, if the parents can't afford or the student can't afford, they just don't go, but when it's tied to being on an athletic team, it concerns me that perhaps maybe some kids won't even bother going out because of that cost that might be involved. I guess that's, I don't know if that's a deal breaker for me, but it's a concern that I would have.
And that's also where, having some partnerships in here and seeing, talking with that's also where Ori Nation comes in, is that, does this also qualify for, if we do have a hardship type situation, would they kick in a bunch of that, I'm not sure, those are all things that they have to answer, talking, and these are all still preliminary things here, coming to us, then when all of a sudden have this, one of the reasons why we want to come to you with this tonight, or is just to give you guys, you know, not to also be spring this on you in February. Hey, we want to do this here because the time of schedule comes in to play with it. I'd have to see what Erin and Maria have to see, would the softball team be allowed to, I don't know if we're gonna hear or not, put you on the spot, would the softball team be able to take money out of their budget to pay for a hardship, labor for a player if they're unable to afford to?
We had another, yeah, we had another situation where we decided, no, it wasn't appropriate for it to come out of their budget. We do, as Samantha said, we do have funds for that, for hardships, that are outside of athletics.
That's if you know about, you know, if somebody just chooses, know that it's coming and just doesn't want to say it or embarrassed to say they don't have the money and just doesn't go out to the sport, that, I mean, that might just be minor, you know, but still, I think it's important.
That's similar with band, too, right, with the big Florida trip? You know, I mean, same kind of scenario.
I guess.
You wouldn't go out for band the year of the Florida trip if you were embarrassed to ask. I, I know a couple of students back in my, back in my day who did the same thing. So you're not wrong, but it, it doesn't negate the fact that it's a good experience for the team.
But at the same point, piggybacking on that notion is, I also want to make sure that we have things in place because we don't want to have students not going out for softball this year for fear of this year and be like, well, I'm not going on this trip, I'm on this Florida team, so what's the point of going out? I don't want that to be a situation either. The one thing that I'm very proud of with, with all of our coaches, is like I said, you heard the numbers from Todd, Todd worked with football, I can tell you right now, for soccer this spring, we're looking at having well over fifty girls out for soccer, to the point where we could probably not have to do any club whatsoever for girls' soccer this spring. The numbers in our athletic program overall are really trending in an upward fashion, so I would hate to have something that's meant to be a really positive, wonderful thing for these students, be something that would knock the numbers backwards also, so that is something that we would have to make sure that we address, that that would not be a situation going forward or, too.
So I have a question, or more so a comment, if we as a school district don't have experience with sending a sports team out of state, have we connected with any other schools that have, that we could get some best practice sharing?
It's very, I've talked to a few schools on that, and part of the problem is that most of the schools that do send their students out and go on these trips are usually much larger in size and usually their booster clubs, that, we have Ori Nation, which is one booster club for everybody. A lot of these places, a lot of these schools, larger schools have your individual sports booster clubs that will foot the bill for a large chunk of something like this, so we have a very, for, for lack of a better way to say it, a unique situation here with our, not only with our size, but the way we do run our booster club, is very unique compared to pretty much anybody else in the state, so I, I personally am reaching out to other schools and talking to other athletic directors. A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Cohen and I spent the weekend out at the Dells at our lot convention, I talked to several A V down there about it, and that was the hang-up I met here, like, well, how did you guys pay for this? Well, our booster club took care of that.
And I'm talking more, not from a payment, but more from a communication liability, what else aren't we thinking, you know, just kind of checklist, hear all the things that the school district has in place that would be helpful for a successful out-of-state trip.
I'm pretty sure that Horicon did this not too many years ago, you may want to check with Mike and Ryder.
Yeah, that's, I think that's about like, we have medical things, I know when Jerry and we did the band trip, that's a two-year process to get everything rocking and rolling and to make sure that everything is, people are, having the district okay, or having the board okay this and both of that, I think, just having that, what happens with emergencies, how do things work, where are the games at, what is the transportation, what, what parents are going, what is the overall cost, how's that cost broke down, how long are they going to be done, what is itinerary, is there a cancellation policy, anything like that, I think all there's are big things that from a, a policy standpoint that, you know, the bottom line is that the district would be liable if it was okay to go there, but to mitigate the liability, I think is a, a big deal, to make sure that all those things are covered, the best, the best possible.
And I'm not sure, but like, you know, at a college level, you know, we have, we're under a query report, so like anytime our students travel out of state, anywhere, you have to be in the state off of our campuses, we have to do like some crime statistics about where they're going to, I mean, so again, I don't know what we're subject to here under the school district, but I'm, I'm used to, you know, having some further information about where the travel is taking place, so.
Another point, Matt, I think, perhaps, too, is precedent that it sets, because, and that's fine, if it, but I think we need to look further along because I know that other programs, if this works and it's successful and fun for the kids, other coaches are going to be wanting, thinking to do the same thing. I know, like you mentioned, one time in the past, we, we had, we went through it, you know, boys that drove basketballs at Disney World and were to have these type of operations going and, you know, girls softball in the spring, boys baseball probably at some point might be looking at it, so, and all that's okay, but I just want to make sure we're forward-thinking and, you know, can we develop a policy or procedures on?
And that's, that's one of the things in working with Erin and stuff, making sure that, moving forward here, that we want to make sure that this isn't just a fly-by-night, you know, making sure we have something set up that not only is going to be helpful for the future of softball, but then also, obviously, this will pay the labor, if baseball wants to go and do something, soccer, you name it, for pretty much all of our outdoor sports would be interested in doing something like this, I think, because of the ability to play in nicer weather outdoors. But even as years pass, basketball, taking out something like that over the break and stuff, since they, they play over the holiday, the Christmas holidays.
I'd say that's something, too, you can look at the Milwaukee schools that travel for basketball tournaments in Vegas or in California or wherever that would be, just have more of a, an idea of what the entails and what, what would need to be done in order to mitigate liability and ensure as much success as possible.
I know W L A boys' baseball team went south to Alabama area back five, six, seven, eight years ago, happened to be down in that area where they were playing, and so that, I don't know if they still do either, but that might be a resource, too, to find out.
W A's A D was actually my mentor last year and stuff, so we, we talked about, he didn't have any information on that, so. Bunch of basketball, though, I don't know why our basketball team want to leave over holidays, especially with the holiday Hall of Fame tournament that we are, we're hosting this, so, we got something right here, but better than anything to go find another state that they want to play right here, but.
And I would say maybe the time crunch, too, I mean, to have it planned is a big deal to know that, you know, in the spring of 2020, I know that's time-sensitive and I know that there's different things, but I would just, what Mike, listening with Matt, and this is the first time that I saw this information about what there was, and I really, haven't really seen an itinerary yet, I was waiting, so I think more information and maybe getting more of those logistics, I, I guess that's what I would recommend, to see what can happen.
I prepared this last night, too.
Which, which is the thing, that is, I mean, this is a big deal. And in order for the school board as a governmental agent to say that they'll be okay, I would just ask that Coach Stepbacher and the team, I'm sure that they could get together this information, talk to different people, I'd just recommend really having more information, tangible things to know specifically, and like you said, it doesn't mean it's not going to happen, it's just making sure that there's more of a plan so that, that, that other people can help out.
And Steve, you bring up a good point about precedence, because it wouldn't just be athletics that might come forward, it would be the music department that is already doing a trip every two years?
Four.
Oh, every four years? Oh, every four years? And Lee's.
Oh, and Broadway, yeah, they go every year to Chicago, too.
Yeah, so, yeah, just some things to think about, great opportunities, but things to plan ahead for.
One other thing is the expedition, I don't think we want to take it that far.
Yeah.
That's a good point. The, in a 14-year-old vehicle, it's off the grid going.
I don't want to date.
Not a big, but when you're, kids are.
And then when you start looking, another thing to look into, just to throw this at Coach Stepbacher, it might be more cost efficient to get a bus. We have bus drivers already, you know, or to get a bus, because then it's all together, it's that team, that might even be a better route than you could get mixed up if you have multiple vehicles and to rely on other parents to drive their kids. You know, what happens then? Is there going to be a kid that's not theirs in the car, too? And then is that going to be okay, that liability, even though it's a school trip? So there'd be some things that I, I think that kind of flush out a little bit. But even if it encourages more costs, it might be the more correct way to go and to save for the best, because that's where, yeah, that expedition, I, I would concur with that.
It's fairly difficult with, like, even though Coach Smith has a bus driver's license, in order to transport, you can drive a school bus across the street and get that, that med card, you know, neither him or I, him or I had that, so that's where the huge cost of, the bus comes into play is, obviously, you're one on five days, you're paying the driver per hour, the entire ID is gone. And holidays, and holidays and stuff, too, so that's where the huge increase comes into the bus, so we'd have to look into potentially seeing if Coach Smith would be able to get his med card to transport that if we're having to do.
I just, my, my recommendation just hearing this is that more information in order to make decisions, to be comfortable with going and sending and doing this, not even know like he's, he had a good point too, Paul, like where, and it's Indiana, can talk about what cities, where they're going to be going, what is the lodging, like what are the areas like?
So it's a, it's a challenge, I don't know, I get the feedback that I can go forward with the coaches and have that broken down more, so that when we come back together on the 17th of December, we'll hopefully be able to lay it out, you know, step by step, the way it goes and what the kind of action is to address a lot of these questions and concerns, be it the hardship, be it the transportation, lodging, et cetera, so that way, we don't leave those questions unanswered. Again, mainly because not only is it important for this trip, but those coming after.
Talked to Jerry and Lee also. Jerry takes the band, and then Lee does every other year, he takes people out east, even though he goes to Explorer Cup, those are great resources, because I know for Ethan, I mean, the kids go out east, there's a lot assigned, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things happening.
All right, any other questions? All right, well, thanks. We look forward to more information.
We'll come back in December with some more information to look at.
Thanks, Matt.
No problem.
All right, number two, discuss and consider furniture purchasing contracts for the FLC building and remodel project.
Some of them I ran off my card stock, so. All right, so what you have right here, this is, we hired Bray to help us go through the process, just like C.D. Smith, to help us get our subcontractors, and this is all of the bids that came back and the accepted bids, it's all right here, that's a summary of them. So they all have fair pricing, so it's, the prices that they would get are the best prices you can get for those, those pieces of furniture based on state contracts and, and regulations. So that information there, if you look, there is, it's the budget was $750,000 appliances, that's, that's the district will purchase, and that we might even become underneath there, that's all the refrigerators, couple dishwashers, so that's budgeted, but just kind of earmarked. Then you can see for each one, the CD, I quote, Phase One, classroom chairs, multipurpose community rooms, Phase Two, classroom chair. You'll see Phase One and Two. Phase One is for the new addition, Phase Two is for the remodeling. So as you look through all these and then Bray, and the, the fee they take is around $50,000, and that's for processing everything, ordering, there is very, there's a lot of different meetings that have gotten together to make sure that everything is ordered and looked at. It's quite, quite the, quite the undertaking. So overall, the budget, everything is under budget, and it looks like that it even could see some more savings. So this would be for room, this would be for furniture for all 5K through fifth grade, for all the commons areas, for all the office space, for all the, the new district boardroom and learning area, so it's for everything furnished in that building.
What's the floor, 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 Swiss system? Is that like covers and clever touches and things like that?
Yep, it's all the different things that, when you look at the different, yeah, like in there, you can, that's a good way to put it, the furniture, the office furniture, things like that. Been vetted through by the staff and by the team, Carrie Jo and her staff and the architects, so numerous meetings, and we actually have more furniture than what we felt we'd be able to purchase, so.
What happens with the balance left over from that line item with the random funds that were earmarked for this?
There's 750,000 earmarked for this.
Yeah, and there's, it comes to 745, so the balance just rolls back in.
Oh, there's, there's adds and subtractions throughout this whole process, one's 3,000 more, other ones are $10,000 add, then there's, oh, we need to run five duckworks instead of three, so that's 20,000, so there's been kind of an ebb and flow of all these different costs.
But it doesn't matter that it was earmarked for?
No, no, this is budgetary.
Okay.
All right. So what does that mean, play area furniture, not reflected?
Okay, so currently where the, where the library is, so the library's got a wall on it, and then there's a room, that room is going to be the district off, or district, the district office meeting area, and there'll be a bathroom, and that's in that, where the computer lab used to be at FLC. And then the library, there's a wall now that separates the library, that wall will come down, and that'd be like an indoor play or recreation area. There's no furniture stuff for in there. So like climbing things and that, that was something that's just been omitted right now.
So that's nowhere in budget?
No, that's, well, we're going to get that, we don't even know what that area's going to look like or be, so I think it's one of those things where we don't know exactly what that space will be utilized for, or how, or what type of age-appropriate things we're going to want, so there's still a lot of furniture, we're going to have extra furniture left over that's somewhat new from different areas that we'll try to sell in some areas, but we'll have, we'll have plenty to fit there and then find out what we really need. Yeah.
Entertained motion then to approve the furniture purchasing contracts?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Senator Cal?
Stepbacher, yes. Good afternoon, yes.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Motion carrying. Number three, discuss and consider technology purchasing contract for the FLC building and remodel project.
All right, so there's $200,000 budget of that, there's probably about, about $195,000 left, and this is just for FLC. And what this is with Tierney Brothers, this is for the, the clever touch, which you can see behind you, are, he's part of our instructional technology group, so if you look behind you here, this is what the clever touch is, it's, it's, well, it's an interactive whiteboard that'll hang in every room, 65 inches, and then some of the other areas, there's two areas that will be 75 inches, but pretty much what it is, is it's, it's internet ready, it mirrors from your, your computers, it's pretty awesome. It'll be the, it'll, it'll replace all of projectors, it'll replace all of the screens, everything, it'll be in every classroom, it'll be their main area for instruction.
Just, I'm sorry.
It's, it's the same as the one you already currently have?
Yes. Yep, we tested a couple, and that one of those clever touches is by far the best one.
This is in all schools?
FLC right now. Right now, we have, how many, Sam, do we have at the high school right now, like three?
We have one, two, yeah.
Three, and then Lee has one here. The idea is that in time, when we start looking at our leases and what goes on, we're going to stop looking at projectors and going more and more to these, because these, these are interactive whiteboard, it hooks up to any computer, it goes, it can be as basic as you want it, but it also has a ton of different features that can interact with Google Apps for Education, with Power School, which is our, our online learning platform. So the nice thing, too, is that this is one piece of equipment that's standard throughout the whole district, can be upgraded, supported from a central area using a, a mobile device management system, so the upkeep of these are going to be very, very, very simple, and Dan Sitter and Ivan Escobar are developing professional development so that teachers will be able to learn how to utilize these things this year, but then also next summer and moving into next year. The next?
They're working with Tom Mothee right now on his, and, I mean, anyone who does it or who tries it loves it. I think every time Reed Hanson, if we borrow his, he's like, no, you're bringing it back, right? Like, you know, because he's really using it and loving it in his group.
There, one of the things you raised about at the technology meeting was mounting and...
Here we go. Okay, so this is called a balance box, so if you look down here, you're going to see where it says balance box, 490, $640, that's what this is. Okay, and what's a balance box is, we don't have anything mounting here, so we'll update for that, but what it is, is it's, it's not hydraulics or anything, so it'll be mounted not on the floor, but on the wall, and what it is, is to the touch, so a kid can come up there and move it up or down, so it'll be mounted at one height, but in, you know, first grade, if there's a shorter person, it's down, if it's taller, it could come up, and it has no hydraulics, it doesn't have buttons to push, nothing. You'll see how it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that will, it'll eliminate any problems with kids, and even if you're in a wheelchair, look, nice. So this will take, instead of having one net, it's, you'll look right here, so this is how it works, works with springs, and we would be getting the one to the, to the fire, or the second from the right, they wouldn't be on stands, it'd be on the wall. So this is the next part of, so each room would have the $2,828 clever touch, and then they would have this mounting system, so it can go up, it can go down, and it can meet the needs of the students or the staff wherever that they're at. And then you'll see the other costs here, you'll see there's a couple larger ones, a 4100, one of those would be in the, in the new district meeting room, and another one would be in the art room, where there are larger areas. And then you will see that there's a system core infrastructure solution, that's a mobile device management, so that they can be managed from one area. Bless you. We do have the opportunity to have them hardwired with our CAT 6 Ethernet, or they're also Wi-Fi ready, it's going to be a very robust Wi-Fi network there. The $15,700 is installation, so what would happen is, is we'd put the balance box mount, and we put the clever touch to each room, they would come in, mount, and make sure that they're all right and guarantee that. I don't know, I think we might have a little bit of wiggle room there on cost, but that's what that $15,700 is. So the whole cost for all of, all of the, a total of 36 clever touches with the mounts, everything installed is about $150,000, and then that saves money, we have some projectors that we need to purchase yet, and also then start looking at having, they're getting every teacher a laptop that interacts with this.
How come we're having a big one in the lunchroom?
Because it's about twice the size of this, and if we had a small one, it'd be hard to see. Plus, the district meeting room, that's going to be used more for professional development, it'll only be used once a month for district meeting, but it's just a larger area.
That was my question, so how often is it going to be used?
It should be used quite a bit, that's going to be, like, this room right now gets utilized probably more if we didn't have robotics, but that area's, I would guess would be, Adam will do a lot of stuff in professional development when he gets together with the staff for curriculum and instruction, I'm sure that room will be utilized a lot as we start to get more into, more into different types of teaching and learning and assessments, and so, it should be used quite a bit.
So the three-year warranty is just on what? That's just the, that's the manufacturer's warranty, it's just three years?
Yep.
So the software that's in it, I mean, are you at least going to get 10 years out of each of these?
Oh, yes. The, they, I forget how many thousands of hours they are, but the, the software is proprietary, so once we buy them, we own it, we don't have to keep paying to update that software, and there's a, there's a browser in there, it's a clever, so we have that software.
Yeah, all I'm saying is the interaction, the tools that you need to interact with, all this technology will be changing drastically over the next 10 years, the laptop that you're using, everything else. As those things change, the tool itself, we don't want to have to have another huge giant buy, like, all of this stuff should be updating itself for the next decade.
Correct. That's what's so great about the clever touch, is that it, it's HDMI input, so whatever the peripherals, also it's got, it's, it's got its own type of Bluetooth, so it can also interact wirelessly with them. So the machine itself is, it's, it's a real, it's like a, it's like a monitor on steroids, if you will. And then what it does is, like a Chromebook right now, a MacBook, a PC, they interact, so the idea is, is that it's clever touch, as those machines get more and more, so will the clever touch. Also, there's a place where you can put a computer, and we're not going to buy the computers, but you can slide a computer in there, too, and it can even do more, but you can do that with a peripheral computer, too. So as far as the peripherals that'll help run it, that, that it'll be able to handle those as they continue to grow. And a lot of it's web-based, too. So I mean, and that's the future anyways, so. I feel confident that this will be a solution that lasts us at least 10 years.
Like, when you said they have their own Bluetooth, you don't mean their own proprietary form of Bluetooth, you just mean they have Bluetooth?
Well, they have Bluetooth, but they also have something, I forget exactly what it's called, it's not Bluetooth, but it creates a local area network, so that it can pick up and it can work with the software that's on the computer. You can very easily take and put a Bluetooth receptor or, or antenna and then turn it into that, too, because it has HDMI inputs, and so anything that you want to do with it, it has the inputs that can then take and utilize that technology to run that piece of hardware.
Yeah, as long as you're not locked into any of their proprietary stuff moving forward.
The only thing I see on that is we have five years of the mobile device management system, and if that, so we have five years of that, but after that, that only means that it allows us to do it remotely and manage it, we could do it up to each machine, too, but I think at that time, everything's becoming more free and free and free. Like, for instance, Microsoft, we used to pay about $30,000 a year for a Microsoft subscription, it's now 6,000. So it's, a lot of it is about not, and the nice thing about this is, is it's smart technology, not meaning it's not like intelligent, smart boards, this is something totally different. So I plug in my computer to this, and it actually, when I touch the, my, the screen here, it moves my computer. So it interacts with your computer through HDMI or also through their, their local area network also. I'll bring one in next time. Never even thought about that, but I'll bring one in next time. We'll steal it from Reed. And Steve's seen him before, he's, he's seen him in action for a couple times, I believe you're all looking at him for the past, probably a year, when we had the Sonic View and then the clever touch.
Okay, well, entertain motion to, to the technology purchasing contract. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Senator Cal?
Park.
Yes.
Stepbacher, yes.
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 Motion carries. And then number four, discuss and consider extra duty coaching contracts for Brent Portman, assistant boys basketball, Kelly Holland, JV boys basketball, and Daniel Duscheck, who is that, volunteer assistant boys basketball.
Oh, you might think, why do you have volunteer boys assistant basketball that the board has to approve? What that then does is allow that coach, Daniel, if there need to be a minivan driven or, you know, he'll go through the same background check that any of our coaches do, so he won't be getting paid, but he'll have the same responsibilities that all of our other coaches and the opportunities that they all have also. We've done that for cheer before, I know that when Tom was here, we did it for, for his wife, too, so that she could be covered by the district when going to different events, so that's the reason that, that's there.
Any background on the three of them, where they're, I know about Brent, but others?
Kelly Holland's worked with Royal before, he actually has been around basketball and been with Royal and did a nice job, I think, in the summer, and then when Royal's done other things, so I've seen him around also. I don't know Daniel Duscheck. I don't know Daniel Duscheck.
But me, okay.
But Matt does.
Are they teachers?
No.
Where?
No, all community members. That's Larry's son, too.
Right. Now, you played the same year my son did for Bunnies. Okay, well, any questions? Entertained motion to approve the contracts. Assistant, I'll make a motion. I'll second. Any other questions? And when you're ready, we can roll call.
Can I just ask one question before I do this? So assistant boys' basketball, it, does girls' basketball?
Yes.
Assistant?
How that works is, so each sport, so like in basketball, we have a varsity, right now because of three teams, so there's a, there's a J V one coach, a J V two coach, and a varsity coach, okay? So what happens is, is that pool of money was like, let's say, $9,000, let's just say it's $10,000, right? The coaches can hire as many coaches as they want and split that money out. So when they have an assistant, that just means that then Royal is going to figure out, and Matt, how much that person makes. You could have five, six, seven, eight assistants, it still comes out of that same pool. So it's not an additional cost, it just means the way the money is around goes different.
All right, roll call.
Okay, um, Pollack?
Yes.
Hack?
Yes.
Stepbacher, yes. Gudas, yes.
Okay, motion carries, and then I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
You start it down.
And roll call.
Pollack?
Yes.
Stepbacher, yes. Gudas, yes.
Yes. We stand adjourned.